Yeah, so let me call to order the April fifteenth meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We are meeting tonight by live teleconference pursuant to Governor's executive order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty to reduce the spread of COVID nineteen. Members of the public have been asked to participate in the meeting via live stream or by cable channel twenty on wave cable and to have submitted comments in writing to the city clerk by the commencement of the meeting. So Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Mayor Cabaldin.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Sandin.
Here.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Here.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Here.
And Councilmember Orozco.
Here.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. That brings us to item one A, which is a presentation by members of the public on items that are not on the agenda. Madam Clerk, we received no public comments under item one A.
That is correct.
All right, then we'll proceed to item one B, which is council communications or the reports or other communications this evening. Councilmember Guerrero.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of reports of conference calls that occurred in the last week. The National Water Race Conference held a conference call to discuss certain issues that are coming up in Congress. And some of the things that were discussed were related to addressing the $500,000 threshold, which disqualifies ports. And so they are looking to address that in Congress in addition to payroll tax credits so that local governments can qualify for tax cover credits for paid sick and family leave and also make the port authorities eligible for the paycheck protection program. In addition, they would like to see included a $1.5 billion aid for seaports grants aid program and 4.5 billion for the Corps of Engineers coastal navigation programs. And in addition, there's upcoming hearings that will be addressing a number of issues in Werda. And so those hearings are going to continue as planned. And their Senate Environment and Public Works Committee is still planning to hold the April twentieth hearing on their draft Water Resources Development Act. And it will also include U.S. Army Corps of Engineer issues. In addition, the Sacramento Valley League of Cities had a conference call on Monday, and we discussed our upcoming tours. And so those are all up in the air depending on the shelter in place orders that are taking place. We also discussed some of the things that happened in the state budget committee and all the League of Cities activities that are being actively engaged, including the sales tax layaway, which is going to impact cities' funding sources. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Sandin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Valley Clean Energy Met on April nine, all these meetings are virtual, so I don't have to say that. And the board approved a power purchase agreement with Rugged Solar and updates on operational adjustments due to COVID nineteen prices. And then Yolo County Housing met earlier today, and we are required twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five five-year plan and twenty twenty annual plan, along with related capital plans. And we approved a mid-year budget revision. We also postponed reopening housing choice voucher and project-based voucher waitlists due to the COVID nineteen limitations. It's not possible to have face-to-face interactions with potential clients at this time. That's my report. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Orozco.
Nothing to report.
All right, thank you. I have a couple of reports. First, we've been through the U.S. Conference of Mayors. We've been negotiating with the congressional leadership on the next, the next large relief package. And I know Supervisor Viegas is in the, in the room, but we are right now in a bit of a fight with the National Association of Counties. We have a proposal that Speaker Pelosi and Senator Schumer has put forward, that would increase CDBG funding by $54 billion. The, the first round of the, of the relief package increased the CDBG allocation by about $2 billion. It's a very significant change. And that money would go out by formula, the CDBG formula. And so the estimate is that we would receive about sixteen times our normal amount of CDBG funds as the principal mode of relief. So that, that's a, it still requires the approval of the whole Congress, including the Senate, which is where it will, it will run into the most challenges. But that's a significant, significant appropriation. So I want to also acknowledge Congresswoman Matsui in between getting married, also joined as a cosponsor of that proposal. And she's been very helpful in advocating it and making clear our needs to Speaker Pelosi and her colleagues as well. So that's been really helpful and important. Also participated today in the first meeting of a new national task force on recovery, pandemic resilience and recovery. And this is a task force that is working on one of the, the central components of the, of the main proposal that is now out there for what's to do about the next stages of the, of the countywide and statewide and national responses. Sort of what, what do you do after shelter in place? And how, how, how soon can you move out of shelter in place? And I know the city manager is going to cover some of what the governor has gone over. But the governor, number one on the governor's list is, is this strategy. And it has got the support of most of the public health experts and others around the country as well. And that essentially is massive, massive, massive testing, rapid testing, including testing on folks who are, are showing no symptoms or other illness, but testing on the order of two per, two to three percent of all Americans every day, including randomized testing for workplaces and schools and other, and other locations. So matched with massive contact tracing, more intense than any public health offices do contact tracing today, but also for many, many more people, given the amount of testing that would be, being incurred. So ramping up contact tracing by one hundred or two hundred or a thousand or two thousand times what it currently is. So a really significant increase in the amount of contact tracing that's going on, then leading to supportive isolation. So I, I, I learned this morning that quarantine is just the word that we use when we're think, when we're talking about folks who, who, for whom we don't know whether or not they have been affected with the virus. But if you have been affected and so contact tracing and testing would show this, then you would be in supportive isolation, but different from the situation we're in now, where there would be sort of wraparound services, guaranteed protections at, at, at work, care, other things that would be supportive of that. That's the, that's the consensus direction that the country is going in in terms of the public health community. And also, as I said, what the governor has said, we have to have, be able to do that before we can exit a broad-scale shelter in place. So a national task force has been convened of some folks from the military and the public health communities, Harvard and several major foundations. And then I think five mayors from around the country to work on the deployment part of that, of that strategy. So if, if the testing kits and materials and swabs can be manufactured and distributed at the scale that that strategy calls for, then how, how do we get them actually deployed in communities? Because, you know, two thousand contact tracing efforts or three thousand tests in a community like ours really can't be done through doctors' offices and the, and the community care clinic and the public health office at the county. It requires, requires retooling and repurposing all sorts of other existing systems and institutions and people. And the, the only way to do that rapidly and at scale anywhere is through local governments. And so with counties and cities and others taking the lead. So, but nobody has scoped that out before. And so we're now working to try to figure out what will that take, what will it cost? And then where, where, where can we begin? Because that's not an effort that can happen nationally all at once. And, and so they've asked a few of us that represent cities that know how to get stuff done to, to, to see at different sizes and scales to participate in this effort. So I'm participating with the mayors of New York City and Columbia, South Carolina, and Oklahoma City and several diverse range of five or six cities throughout the country to put that effort together and aligns well with what we're trying to accomplish here in the states. We had our first meeting this morning to go over the strategy and identify some of the key initial hurdles and scoping exercises for that. I also, I'm also participating in the joint crisis management seminar for mayors that's being put on by Harvard, the Bloomberg Foundation, and John Hopkins Public School of Public Health on a weekly basis. And in the most recent session, the focus is on mental health, both in the community, but also the mental health of folks in positions like ours and particularly our staff and others, and how to, how to, how to cope with some of those issues. But as I say, also for the public. And, and so one of the issues that was, that we discussed pretty extensively that hadn't come up before with the public health community was the, and we, but we have talked about it here before at council, which is the intense stress that comes from continuous adaptation. And so the, the tendency that we have in public policy and in politics, frankly, to want to keep deploying new initiatives every second and new policies and whatever. Look, I'm, I'm doing something for you. We're doing something. We're doing something. We're doing something. That, that can have the pernicious effect of raising people's stress and reducing their well-being. And so one example was the whole evictions issue that we talked about in, in the Harvard session, which was that, you know, you have to, we need, you, we want to think about as you consider like changing eviction policies every three days, like is the improvement worth the amount of uncertainty and constant thinking about eviction, number one, that you cause people to go through? And then second, causing people to be confused about what's really going on. So these have been really useful sessions, and I know some of our, our staff team has been participating them as well. But we're really getting down to brass tacks. The other issue that we raised there was how to deal with the issues around contact tracing, but also education and mobilization, in particular cultural and ethnic communities, without causing the challenges that Mayor Pro Tim Sandin identified way back at the very beginning of this. So how do you, in addition to very targeted outreach and communications inside of a community, how do you also reach that, that community on a broader basis? And so this is particularly, you know, true in religious and ethnic communities where, where we, where a lot of our public health outreach and even our city outreach tends to be through established institutions like churches and, and that sort of thing. But that doesn't, that often, especially when the churches are closed, but even when they're not, that's not very effective at reaching some of the, the folks who, who have the highest risk of transmission. That is younger people, teens who don't really listen or may not be attending those services or other, or other functions. So how do we reach them without calling, without calling undue attention to the, to the, to the name of or the nature of the underlying group? So this has been a challenge particularly in our county, in our city, trying to get some help in, in, you know, getting smarter about how to, how to grapple with that. And then finally, this morning, not COVID-related, or this afternoon, the Department of Water Resources and the Delta Conveyance Authority were, were kind enough to do a, a full briefing on their, their, their analysis of the Western alignment for the, for the Delta Project, for the state water project. So the Western alignment is the Garmendi proposal, the big gulp, little sip proposal that the council and the Port Commission have both, have both raised concerns about in the past. Congressman Garmendi and I, and Erin Laurel met about this last week. And then today got a full and complete briefing by the Department of Water Resources and the Conveyance Authority. And without going into any of the details, although we have them for any member of the council that wants them, there are some significant engineering and environmental challenges to the Garmendi Plan. And so although I communicated to Congressman Garmendi on our behalf that, you know, we're, we're, you know, we're, of course, willing to continue to, to, you know, to talk and explore with him, that our fundamental position hadn't changed. And it's, and it seems, given that, given the, the barriers to the, to an implementation of that kind of a project that, that are showing up in the preliminary analysis by DWR and the Conveyance Authority, that, that they're not likely to be, you know, high, high, they're not high likelihood alternative, alternatives to be considered as the process goes forward. But the comment period on all of that ends on tomorrow or the day after. And so we'll see then whether or not it is included as one of the formal alternatives in that process. All right, so with that, we, we have no appointments that we're going to be doing this evening. So we'll proceed, I just closed the agenda. We'll proceed to the consent calendar.
To approve?
Okay.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Guerrero and seconded by Councilmember Orozco that the consent agenda be approved. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. All right, then that will bring us to item three, which is an update and actions on the city's COVID nineteen response. And we're going to turn, turn it over to the city manager. But I wanted to ask Mr. Manager, if, if, given that we have two guests on this item, to give us an update on one particular item that's happened over the last week or that, that it would, that if we might begin with hearing from them before we go to the, to the meat of the report?
Sure, that, that'd be fine. We can include that update now if you'd like.
Okay, why don't, why don't we do that? And, and ask maybe Supervisor Viegas and, and Mr. Yaros, if you'd come on screen. And Supervisor, would you mind leading off and introducing the update for tonight? Because it's a pretty encouraging and exciting development.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for, for having us. And it's an interesting time, to say the least. So, you know, as you are well aware, and the council is aware, Chris Yaros has been running the Broderick Restaurant in town for quite some time. And now he's expanded. He's got a couple of other restaurants. And with the COVID nineteen situation that's occurring, and no surprise to anybody that the need for more food is growing and the challenges with the stay-at-home order, restaurants are struggling. And so Chris really wanted to kind of continue to, to take care of his employees, if you will. So he was trying to figure out a way to keep them on the payroll and keep them employed at his restaurants. At the same time, he wanted to give back, knowing full well that they can be struggling with his restaurants. And so he volunteered, as many have, to, to deliver food most recently. And I think, and I'll let him speak to his experience, but I think what he saw and, and what he experienced really touched his heart in a way where he really wanted to double down and bump up his game and provide a service to our community, to our region, to the, to the county as well. And so, so he has been pursuing for the last couple of weeks access to a larger kitchen. And no surprise, the Washington Unified School District, as you may know, with the Bright Cafe, has an extraordinary culinary kitchen there for their career tech program. And so, long story short, the districts, the Washington Unified School District stepped up in a huge way, basically gave him access to this kitchen. And with our food partner and Yolo Food Bank providing much of the food, Chris has been able to keep his employees on staff essentially working for free. Well, he's paying them to work to make food for, for residents throughout the county. And so, so we're very excited about the prospects of what this can do, given the increasing number of employment and the numbers of folks who are lining up to get food in our community. So I'll just, I'll, I'll leave it at that and let Chris talk about his experience.
Welcome, Chris. Oh, you're still, you're still on mute?
Now, can you hear me now? There we go. See, that's always happens to me, you know, I'm better off in the kitchen, you know? I'm better with a spatula than I am a microphone, for sure. But, but anyway, yeah, so, you know, one, I want to say thank you to, to Oscar and, and obviously Washington Unified for, for really working hard to, to secure that kitchen. You know, we were, we, we consolidated restaurants recently, closed West Sacramento just because Midtown had the most density for us business-wise and kind of moved our West Sac team over to Midtown to run the Midtown store. And we put the West Sacramento, or, or the Midtown team, where our executive chef on this food program. And essentially, you know, we started with, you know, industry folks. And, because, you know, right off the bat, industry folks were out of work. A lot of the front-of-house folks that, that couldn't get unemployment right off the bat needed, you know, needed meals. So we started making some meals for them. And then I, I talked to a couple of people that were, you know, that owned senior facilities, and they kind of told me about the plight of the seniors. And, you know, with them now being, you know, at, at high risk, a lot of them were supporting themselves by going to the food banks or, you know, for instance, the one that we were dealing with on the Sacramento side was, a lot of those guys were going to Loews and Fishes to supplement their meals. So not being able to do that, you know, it started with a story from, from one of my friends. And he said, hey, I have, I have a couple who told me that they were trying to spread a box of mac and cheese out over three days. And, and that's really where they were. They were at the point where they just weren't, they had no access to food. So the seniors were really kind of our first focus. And then we were made aware of the folks that were, were staying in hotels in the, on the West Sac side. And, and then obviously started this partnership with Yolo Food Bank. And they've been fantastic in helping us, you know, get stuff delivered. And we've been used their cold storage, the freeze product. But right now, we're probably serving around, I'd say probably around 3,000 meals a week to, to families in, in, you know, the West Sacramento area, Yolo County area. The, the goal is, you know, hopefully, because I think the need is around four, there's around 4,000 people. And obviously, that's, that's 4,000 people that need meals several times a week, if, you know. So the goal is to, to ramp this program, program up through the school and maybe get 10,000 or so meals out a week through the, the school. And it's really just a matter now of, 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 you know, really having channels for product donations. You know, Yolo, Yolo's doing the best they can for the Yolo Food Bank, but they, they, they have limited resources also. So we're just kind of pulling from all over the place. Del Monte Meats in West Sacramento was, was fantastic. And they're continually, continuing to, to feed us. I mean, I think they probably fed us 3,000 pounds of, of proteins at this point to, to, to help supplement these meals. So, so right now, we're just, we're, we're just looking for resources, you know? And, you know, I don't know if there are any other companies in, in West Sac, maybe Rayleigh's or anybody else that has, that has product that they might be able to push into the program. But, you know, we, we can keep ramping up with labor to keep making it. But, you know, access to the, I, I don't have the financial means to purchase a lot of this stuff. So, so we're just taking, you know, and trying to, to turn these donations as, as quickly as we can. And I think that for us on our side, we'll be, as long as, you know, we're able to take advantage of the PPP loan, we should be okay on the labor side. You know, we're just, we're just taking it kind of day by day. But at, at the end of the day, you know, I think from what I've seen, I mean, some of my experiences with the, with the, with the, the families in the hotels is similar to the, the story with the seniors where, you know, we, I went to visit one and there was a, a mother and two kids, and, and they were trying to spread a box of crackers out over, you know, two days, literally, just that's all they had were crackers. So, so I definitely feel like, you know, it's really important right now that we, that we be, get behind this and get behind the, the food bank and, and making sure that those meals are being provided. I think that's what I got.
Councilmember Orozco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to extend a huge thanks to you, Chris. Obviously, I mean, we all know who are in this meeting right now. This isn't your first. You're not a stranger to, to service in this community. But you're right. I mean, I think we are, have a little bit of more specialized knowledge just because we're on the, you know, we have access to this information. But there are a lot of folks out there that aren't aware of how the vulnerable populations are sequestered and, you know, that that, that, you know, add a significant cost to you, not only for yourself, you know, for your employees, but also for the folks that you're serving. I mean, it goes a long way. And so on behalf of our council, I just really want to extend a heartfelt thank you to you for being such a fantastic community member and, and business leader.
We appreciate that. And, you know, West Sacramento's been very good to, to my, me and my team. So, you know, we, we just want to continue to work with you guys and see if we can, you know, make, make some lives better through this process.
Ready? Oh, Councilmember Ledesma.
Thank you. And Chris, A, you've brought one too many Chris's into this council meeting. But it's great to see you, and I know you've been working extremely hard. I know we've caught up a couple of times in the past week. And I, I just want to say thank you. You, your dedication to our community has been there from the very start. And not many people know that when you open the restaurant, you just really got engaged with our community and our chamber and events and just helping the community. And I know these are tough times for our business community. And I know for you, but to see, and, and for your businesses in Broderick and West Sac. But I know some of the team that you have been able to retain are helping in this effort and the mid, out of the Midtown location. And I know you're working hard to, to try to keep this going. And I guess, I guess a question or maybe an ask is sort of how to follow up so that we know, I know we've talked and you mentioned Del Monte Meats is one local business that's helped in this. But how else can we help you? And either by way of, you know, through promoting your GoFundMe campaign or whatever? Because it is take, it does take cash to sort of get the food to you and then back out to the, the community and the folks that need it. So I just, A, I want to offer whatever I can to help, to help, to help get to that, the goal, so we can expand it. It benefits us all. It benefits our community. And, and this is, I know a large part being funded out of your own pocket. And, but we're here to help. And so whatever other ways you can think of us, how we can help through our own means or through our own channels and networks, I think that's, that's at least what I'm offering. So, but thank you again, and it's good to see you. And I'm sorry it's under a condition where, where you're not functioning and, and serving burgers through the community in general. But you're then doing something so, so much more valuable at time of need when we're all quarantined up and a, a group of people can't get the, can't get the, the access to food. So I just want to say thank you.
Councilmember Guerrero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, just want to say thank you for being out here tonight and sharing your story and what's happening. It's good to know, you know, what you're doing and how you're continuing to provide a vital service to our residents, our community, especially in a, in a time of need and crisis. And you just pulling it together, coming out creatively and establishing a core service, a vital need for our residents is, is heroic. So, and your creativity just to pull that together and even maintain your staff. Want to continue to see what we can do to help and support you. Just let us know. Just give us a list. Send us an email. Pull it just, we can help, we can go and reach out to whomever you think we need to continue to help support your efforts and really appreciate all you're doing. Thank you.
Pro Tim Sandin.
Thank you. Chris, I want to echo the thanks. And I really want to thank you for inspiring people. When our community sees someone like you doing what you're doing and, and being so resourceful and creative, it, it helps folks think about what they can do. And so you're just really inspirational and, and you're making a huge difference. And so I just want to echo the thanks. And also to our county supervisor for, for all that the county is doing as well and for the partnership with you and with, with folks that are trying to make a difference. So we're really proud of you. We continue to be proud of you.
Yeah, everything's already been said. I, I, I mean, this was no surprise when, when I started to hear about it. Supervisor Viegas said something, and you shot, Chris, you shot me a photo. And I'm like, what's going on in this picture? But you were already collecting and distributing food a long time ago now. And, but as everybody else, it was no surprise because from the very beginning, like from the opening of Broderick, the, the restaurant, you know, the, just the care from that, from that, from the, the, long before opening day, I want to be, I want to do right by this neighborhood. I want to do, do right by this place. I want to create a, a sense of place and a sense of pride. And then I want to create a gathering spot that everyone can enjoy. And it's just always about, you know, you're in the business to serve others. And then, as has already been said, the chamber and every possible activity in the community, volunteering, supporting everything. You're probably one of the only people that at least, not me, but I think at least three people or their spouses on this, in this meeting have Chris Yaros costumes basically to dress up as you, which is a pretty amazing tribute in a community like ours. So just really extraordinary. And then to, you know, the outcomes in terms of like amazing hot food, right? There, I mean, there's so much food distribution going on. We know this, you know, you know, we all see each other on this council at, at food banks and food distributions along, all, you know, every other day together. But the, but hot prepared, chef-prepared food is so important to the sense of dignity and hope and completeness. And, you know, you know, it's not like you're living in an institution, but it's still home. And it's still a community and somebody cares. And it makes such a huge difference. And so I just, thank you. Thank you for everything that you, that you're doing. And as, as, as has been said, the inspiration for everyone else. And as our supervisor, we haven't had one of these meetings yet. We had, our supervisor was with us at the very first meeting. So maybe I tricked him a little bit to get him to come tonight too, just to, because we've been working so hand in glove, the city and the county on everything. And so the coordination, the coordination has been perfection between the, these two agencies on homelessness, on, on, on um on homelessness, on 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 health and outreach, on the on the implementation and enforcement of the health order, on the development of the health order, um, on all these, the systems of food, food distribution and everything else, it's been extraordinary. And then you can't, um, you can't go around town, um, I need a day without seeing Oscar, um, without seeing you and and probably Katie, wife, you know, out there doing direct service too. Um, I think we've all been at food distributions with the food bank and or the Yolo County Children's Alliance or someone else, all of us have. Um, and at every single one, we always see you. Um, and you were there before us, you were there when we leave. Um, and the 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 modeling of of genuine uh service and commitment to to each other as neighbors in this community um that you've been doing, it has been, um, again, no surprise, we know who you are, but uh um, it's been just absolutely fantastic. And I think the, one of the results is people in this community now understand the county much better. Like what is, what is your, I know I pay my taxes to those, my property taxes go to Yolo County, but what is that thing? And uh, you know, more than probably in a century, people understand um how important the county is and how important your leadership and your service um is is in our own lives and in the protection of our community and those that are the most vulnerable. So thanks for joining us tonight. And and I know behind the scenes that both you and Mr. Yarrow's have been working through, you've described, you know, great partnerships and all of that. Great partnerships take a lot of work, uh especially under moments of stress and where everybody's running in a thousand directions. And so I know both of you have been working in addition to all the stuff that's visible and getting the food and the cooking, but just the all of the rest of the stuff underneath that has been a tremendous amount of effort. And thank you for stepping up to do it and sticking with it and making uh Chris's dream for how to be, how to how to serve um into 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 a reality. It's gonna make such a difference.
Very good, thank you, thank you for having us.
All right, thank you, I thank you so much, thanks both of you.
Thank you, Oscar.
Really appreciate it.
Thanks, Chris, thanks, Oscar.
All right, so Mr. Laurel, we'll turn it back to you for the for the formal presentation on item three.
All right, thank you, uh, Mayor. Uh, just a quick note on that, um, this may seem small compared to the overall effort of that program, but I did get early heads up from it um uh from a Supervisor Viegas. And uh, we at least committed to, there there's um some fees involved with the school district and reading facilities. Uh, we can't offer our own facilities, we don't have a commercial kitchen, uh, but I did at least commit uh for the city to help with that effort if needed. Um, sounds like that got worked out, but uh, but yeah, like like everyone said, this this effort is extraordinary. I've been in the works for a while and it's a, it's a huge part of what uh is happening on the overall food distribution effort um in the city. So um, I'm gonna take the items a little bit um in in a different order than how they are presented in the staff report, just for simplicity. Uh, the first item I want to talk about, uh, well, first let me back up. This is now, I believe we're in our uh sixth week uh since we held the emergency council meeting. Um, so we've been doing these reports on weekly basis. Uh, we have one action item night. Uh, we have sort of a workshop format for another item and then I'll go ahead and give a brief update um on the attachment one uh piece, which includes all of the, so these actions uh related to COVID nineteen response since we started that effort. Uh, so at first I'm going to take up the item that is the action item um concerning uh the suspension of the vacation cap accrual for uh employees. Uh, this item is being proposed because currently employees, given the fact that they have to shelter in place, have no practical way of utilizing their vacation time. Uh, so many employees are are already starting to hit their cap. Uh, we have a cap for uh good reasons, so we don't allow uh it to get excessive. We want people to use their vacation, there's lots of reasons for that. But in the current time, with an inability for employees to use it, they're they're losing that benefit. And so the proposal is simply to suspend the cap for those employees uh through the end of the year. Uh, the labor groups that it affects are in the report. Uh, but basically, it's all the employees um that that have this issue in those groups. Uh, at the end of the year, they'll only be back under the cap. Uh, so it's really that simple, it's it's just suspended for the rest of the calendar year and then we would reinstitute it um as of twenty twenty one. So um, since the city manager, Man of Berlin, is available, if you have questions on this item, and like I said, this is the only action item uh for this meeting. So I'll turn it back to council.
Any other questions on this one? That everyone, uh, does everybody want to be recognized in this or did, nobody's on mute, so I'm not sure if you went back on the, after the last presentation? Does anyone wish to be, does anyone have a question on this or comments?
No, I just, I just have a quick comment to thank Aaron for thinking, thinking about, you know, doing something effective for the staff. Thank you so much for doing this, Aaron.
Absolutely, this is really, uh, driven by the HR division, so you've been the credit for noticing this, so I'm sure it's appreciated.
All right.
Yeah, so so I'm supportive of it too. Um, I I I don't look forward to seeing too many of these though until, before we deal with the fiscal situation. Um, you know, we're, we are at a point, I think now where uh GDP is down ten percent. Uh, unemployment at fifteen, that's national, uh, some of the other numbers are higher. Um, uh, folks that work for government aren't experiencing it in the same way, um, because they're 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 just the economic dislocation hasn't been as high. Um, but it's severe and um, you know, that ten percent down, that's that's versus four point three percent during the entire Great Recession. Um, so that's it's it's massive and uh, you know, and some, you know, some of the forecasts are, you know, that it will be equivalent or may already be proportionally equivalent to the Great Depression. So we have got to be, you know, fully prepared for for, you know, some serious fiscal issues. And as I think the B reported today, but also the Department of Finance released last week, um, the state's fiscal condition is is already is already turning problematic. And so looking at at significant cuts and and so, uh, so I'm definitely supportive of this because it it's a short term um issue. Um, but uh, but yeah, other, any other issues around, you know, employment and 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 labor costs like that, I think, you know, we definitely will will need to need to wrap into um the 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 meeting that you have set later in the in the cycle for looking at budget and administration.
Yeah, that's definitely the plan too. So we uh have been having meetings and finance division and HR are um working on all sorts of projections and other um information uh to include that item. So right now, we're looking at most likely doing that in the second week of May, but we may introduce the topic um at the May sixth meeting. But we're definitely mindful of everything you just said, so. Um, okay, so I I did want to make a quick note also, we did have some uh slight technical difficulty with the streaming um a little bit earlier. Um, so it cut out for a while and it came back on, uh, it's working now as far as I know, and uh we are recording the meeting. So anyone that missed uh the the minutes that went by uh when it wasn't working can can pick it up uh tomorrow when it's posted. So I just want to let you know that. Okay, so uh, the second item uh in the report, and like I said, it's not an action item for tonight, but it is um proposed as something that the council is recommended to consider, but we would appreciate uh your feedback on it tonight. It has to do with the Yolo COVID nineteen relief initiative and related fund. Uh, so as you know, uh, COVID nineteen has really challenged the short, long-term viability of the nonprofit sector, all businesses really. Uh, but in doing so with the nonprofit sector has put a key part of the social safety network uh at risk. So many of those nonprofits are already active in uh the COVID nineteen response, uh, providing all sorts of social and human services um on the front line of the emergency, ranging from uh medical to food distribution and everything in between. Um, others may not directly be on the front line, but nonetheless, they serve an important role in serving disadvantaged populations or in education and in the overall culture of Yolo County. So uh nonprofits right now are challenged to maintain their viability um through this time. And because of that, Yolo County and the Yolo Community Foundation put together this initiative that's now called the Yolo COVID nineteen Nonprofit Relief Initiative. Um, it's described in detail in the staff report and also uh included the attachments, um, that are the action plan and the summary of the initiative. But there are three main components of of what it includes. Uh, the first is technical assistance uh for nonprofits and things like making grant applications, um, also financial management, things like that. The second is a fundraising campaign that's countywide, uh, that both engages potential donors, but also educates um those uh donors about nonprofits in Yolo County. And then the third component, which is the main one uh for tonight, the topic for tonight, is the relief fund um that's uh set up to make grants to uh local nonprofits. So we've been quickly learning more about the fund and its proposed operations. Uh, some of that detail is in the action plan, but we've also been provided more as the foundation has moved forward with uh organizing meetings. Um, I was able to have a a quick call today with uh the the foundation um uh CEO who uh or director that walked walked through some of the questions we had. Um, I've asked Tracy Michael, our Parks and Recreation Director, uh, to be the staff representative on what they're calling a steering committee, uh, which is described in the in the action plan. Um, the idea for that committee is it would include staff, it's a staff level uh committee from the participating jurisdictions. Um, it's their job to review grant-making criteria, to review the grant applications. And then ultimately, the way it's set up is they would be uh making um selections uh in coordination with um a a leadership advisory committee um that is set up to inform and shape those decisions. It's made up of elected officials from each jurisdiction um and other stakeholders. And that committee's primary purpose, as it's described, is to identify the needs in the community and service gaps and assist with uh the donor education uh campaign and and donation campaign. Uh, Councilmember Sandin, Vice Mayor Sandin is is designated as our representative on that committee. Uh, she's been invited to participate in what I think is the first meeting of that committee tomorrow, uh, where they'll discuss uh their role moving forward. Uh, we've already raised some concerns uh to the foundation staff about how the governance structure is organized, um, how those uh the criteria and priorities are set for the grant-making and how we go about to ensure that geographic equity can be accomplished uh once the grant funds start to get awarded. Um, if we can address those concerns uh to the council satisfaction, anything else uh the council has uh in terms of direction tonight, it would be our recommendation to consider an initial funding contribution um at a level of twenty five thousand. Uh, that would leverage two hundred fifty thousand from Yolo County that seeded the fund. I've talked about this in other meetings that give you an update uh from before, but since that time, uh, just last night, the City Council of Woodland approved the twenty five thousand dollar contribution, Davis had already approved fifty thousand. And I believe some, uh, the expectation of some participation from winners uh will also be happening. Uh, there's also ongoing engagement with uh Yochi Dehe, uh, with Kaiser, they're the health, Sutter Health about their potential participation on some level, even if it's not financial, I don't have a lot of updates there, uh, but they are still uh being engaged. Um, we did ask about some of the the questions that were raised in terms of uh what the overhead uh for this effort might look like. Um, and and also how the funding is going to be distributed, uh, because like I said before, it's both a a focus on the organizations that are that are responding to COVID nineteen and serving the community in that way, but also to maintain the viability of nonprofits at large. So the way it's broken down, uh, the way it's proposed is that seventy five percent of the of the funding would go to uh COVID nineteen-related activities, nonprofits that are providing some sort of relief related to the emergency. The other twenty five percent would be for um funding for other nonprofits. Um, the overhead though is actually um being done in conjunction with the Sac Region Community Foundation. There's an affiliation between the Yolo Foundation and and Sac Region. Uh, they'll be managing the funds uh for grant-making and uh post-grant activities uh like tracking and reporting. Uh, there's a two percent fee for that, so I think that describes the projected overhead, some of the other costs I believe are being uh absorbed into the foundation's operating budget, but uh that's the information I received on on that point. Um, on geographic equity, um, I think that can be accomplished with grants to nonprofits that uh both are directly located in West Sacramento, but also that serve West Sacramento. As you know, many of the the big nonprofit, the larger nonprofits in Yolo County and some of the smaller ones too, they serve uh multiple locations, multiple cities. So uh, for example, the food bank is is countywide and there's other organizations that are um other examples of that. Um, so I think that that can be accomplished in that way, maybe more difficult to accomplish the geographic equity on the uh twenty five percent of the funding um that side, just because of the the sheer number of nonprofits in the county um that aren't in West Sacramento. Um, so that that is a concern that we we still have raised. Uh, so tonight, like I said, I would think of this as a as a sort of workshop on our participation. Um, staff would appreciate the direction about what conditions would be needed for the city to participate, uh, and any other feedback you might have. Um, we're not being, we're not, you're not being asked to actually make an appropriation tonight. If if there is a willingness to do that, we would come back at a later meeting uh with a budget resolution um for that. And then also, I I'm sure um Vice Mayor Sandin uh can take the feedback from this meeting to that first meeting of the leadership committee tomorrow to address any concerns uh raised by the council tonight. So with that, I'll turn it back to the mayor uh for questions and comments.
Great, thanks, uh, thanks, Mr. Laurel, and uh uh also want to thank uh Mayor Portem Sandin. Uh, we're we're very fortunate uh on our council. Um, well, actually, on the last item we heard, um, I I know he's gonna talk about it, but uh anytime somebody in in our community or in the region talks about the PPP benefits and that sort of thing, Councilmember Ledesma has been uh, you know, one of the the key figures nationally, but also helping, you know, business, local businesses one-on-one uh just to to take advantage of that so that they can stay open, continue to make payroll and keep, you know, employees and their families um safe and healthy and 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 eating and everything else. And uh, we're just really lucky that that he's a part of the leadership of this community. And then on this issue, um, I count, Mayor Portem Sandin is one of the leading uh philanthropy um and donor um experts in the entire region, having been the uh the vice chancellor in charge of all of that for UC Davis, for Los Rios, and having been executive director of the Yolo Community Fund uh Foundation and and many, many others. And so uh, we're just, we're, and so her expertise in supporting nonprofit organizations and the and 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 doing so both with a full heart, but also with a clear, a clear-headed mind um instead of uh, you know, expectations and guidelines um is is extraordinarily useful. And so uh, I I just want to say thanks for for devoting the time to make uh to make this uh, make this project move more forward. I do want to, you know, I think I raised at the last meeting and Aaron referenced this. Um, for me, there is a, there is a fundamental um governance challenge here. I I've also been a foundation program officer as well. And this structure is, I I recognize it, but from a city perspective, from a democratic government perspective, it's problematic. Um, so that, I mean, just to, so we're clear, the the fund is a, it's essentially a donor-advised fund, right? Uh, uh, Mayor Portem Sandin, the legal control of this fund um rests not with any of the cities or the county or the steering committee or anyone else. So everyone associated with all the government, all the, all the investors um here are, don't have actual legal control of the funds. So the other names of all the other entities and committees and stuff that are involved, um, you know, we should just recognize that. And ultimately, it's, I think it's the Yolo Community Foundation, or maybe it's the regional foundation that has the legal legal responsibility um for these. But um, in no other domain do we, do we permit there to be a governance structure in which um a a group of elected officials, in this case, city council members, are advisory to a group of staff um that that reports to them. So in this situation, the the sort of the top of the pyramid is the steering committee, which is comprised of the designees of city managers. Um, and then underneath that, essentially, without a, without a formal responsibility to do anything other than go raise money, is the is the policymakers themselves. Um, and the issue is partly about like who gets the grants for sure. That is a, that is a policy question in mo- in most cities that have, even even when we had mini-grants here in the city, the council approved the mini-grants um directly. But more fundamentally, things like uh seventy five percent for direct service and twenty five percent for um uh for rent, for, you know, capacity and for sustainability, that's a policy decision. That's not a, that's not an implementation or execution decision. And those those sorts of decisions, if it's going to be um, you know, the 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 taxpayers' dollars of the cities, uh, since we don't have grants from Sutter or from from others in order to support our participation in the fund, those just, those policy decisions need to be made by the policymakers of the of the communities that are involved. And so we have this inverted governance structure um that is contrary to to every structure that we've ever set up in cooperation with other cities um in the county. So to me, that's that's a sort of a fundamental problem. Um, there's no constitution, no, there's no work that's been done that's depends on this, so it's easily fixable if um if the if the partners were 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 to choose to go in that direction. But I do think that's a a pretty fundamental uh one. You know, and it partly relates to that, that, you know, the 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 board of the foundation, the, so the legal entity with the responsibility here. The board of the foundation, I I believe is, it's nine members, four, four from Woodland and five from Davis. There isn't a single one from West Sacramento, so we can't, we can't depend on the actual legal entity to be, to be looking out for our interests or for the investments that we might be making. Um, because the 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 foundation's board is, does not include, not not just not proportional representation of our community, but I, but at least according to the web, none um at all. And uh, so that getting the rest of the governance structure right is becomes um, becomes even more important. Uh, you know, we we also have a local community foundation here in West Sacramento um that could potentially be an alternative. We wanted to make those investments, but I do, but this governance question is is first and foremost in my mind. The second is, I just, you know, I think we we need to be clear from the outset about what our intentions and our plan is here. Because um, as we were talking about in the last item, um, uh, we are, we're, we've already moved off of the notion that the city government is going to be able, going to have the capacity to to step in and rest that the city government is going to be able, going to have the capacity to, to step in and rescue everyone and everything outside of our own domain, because we're going to be in a position where if, uh, if our situation is like the state of California and others, that we're going to have to grapple with the potential for cuts in basic services that we haven't seen since the recession. And if we are charged with responsibility for massive contact tracing and testing as well, the, 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 the possible that the expenditure demands on the city are going to go up dramatically. So I do think it's important that we, that, as we, if, if we move forward in this direction, either through this fund or through the West Sac, the Community Foundation, that we are not sort of, we're not, we're not, we're not, this is not our anti-ing in to some set of future investments, um, because we're not likely to have those. I mean, and we shouldn't be making a commitment that we're not, that we're not able to keep, um, in the, in the, in the long run. But, uh, but I, I'm only a second level player in this one, uh, having worked for a couple foundations, but Mayor Pro Tim Sandin is the expert, so, and she's been doing, um, all the work on the, and the, and the collaborations with the various partners on this so far and, and tomorrow. So let me turn it over to you, Mayor Pro Tim Sandin, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, we do have our first leadership advisory committee tomorrow, and that is when this, um, I think the effort publicly is launched, grant making, uh, public launched tomorrow. That's the current, um, state of things. There, there definitely is a need, as we all know, for support at this time for the business community, our citizens, and of course, not nonprofit organizations that serve West Sacramento. And, um, clearly, clearly the need is there, and, and they, as we know, the county stepped up to initiate this, this fund and to get, kind of get the ball rolling. And is, thank you, Mayor, um, I do, I do have a background, uh, and have served as a board member of Yolo Community Foundation as well as its executive director, and I'm also a fund holder, um, uh, right now. So I, I, I do understand, uh, operations of the community foundation and its mission. I, um, I put my city hat on, though, through thinking of this and not as an individual donor. What would I first, how might I personally approach this? And that led me, um, in addition, you have a very fundamental question, I think, I think we should all discuss and think about. But I think before this comes back to us next week, and Aaron and I, um, Aaron through, uh, city manager, through the representative, um, Smichael on the, on the advisory committee, as it, as a current organizer and myself, we may be able to get at these questions, and some of them the city manager mentioned. But for me, um, what's really important, and, and you've men- mentioned this, Mayor, is, is what, will the funds that we contribute support the needs of West Sacramentoans and help nonprofit organizations that serve West Sacramentoans? We're, we're known as a city that leverages, um, grant opportunities. We, we are always looking for ways that, that we're leveraging our resources. So with the city hat on and thinking about our contributions to a fund, how, how we know that we can do that? And I think, um, Mr. Mayor, you've mentioned some of the potential limitations, but if we could answer that, like, is there a possibility that the contribution forward will be leveraged? And what does that look like? How can we be assured of that? Um, I think that's a question that we really need to ask directly and, and have some kind of answer if, if that's possible, as we're contemplating this. And then, of course, another question is, who else will join the cause? Right now, it's, uh, county, uh, and three city, or two cities, and, and we've been approached in another, another city. So I, I think we really need to be thinking about who else, and I, I think that was contemplated early on, that there would be other institutional investors, and I think that's how that's written. So I think we really need to understand that more. Um, and that, I think that leads to your comment about, uh, potentially coming back to the same sources, but we, we need to know, is this, is this a, a fixed amount that is just the contributions of the government and et cetera? And then all the other concern, concerns you mentioned about, um, and I've thought about us at some point, thinking a year or two years from now is potentially being in the position that the nonprofits that they're dealing with now, our, our issue may come later, where we are faced with, um, not having the, uh, resources to, or, or coming up with very difficult decisions that are happening more quickly with nonprofits. And then, what, um, what does the effort cost? And I think the city manager, um, mentioned the, uh, cost of the fund, um, and the cost recovery fee of two percent. But, um, what, what is the cost of the whole effort, uh, advertising, et cetera, et cetera? The, and the reason why, I, I, I know because of my work in this area that it does, it takes money to raise money. But we have, with our hat on, we have the obligation to be transparent to residents. And when we're making decisions, you have to be able to say, oh, we put forward this much, it costs this much to, to do the work, and that left so much to actually go to not go to the organizations that serve our community. We need to be able to answer to that. So I feel like we just need to be getting a little more information with regard to if, if we were to contribute, obviously, how much comes back to West Sacramento nonprofits? And then what, is the whole amount, are we expecting the whole amount plus? Or is there something less, or we just really, in, in my opinion, need to have more understanding of that? Um, and I think those are my first set of questions. I, I, I'm really interested in, I, I know how important the sector is to our community. Um, and I, I, I just want to make sure we're very transparent in how we're approaching, um, this question.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Sandin, for your leadership on this, uh, Councilmember Guerrero.
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I did have a question. You referenced, um, having a, that there is like a local foundation. I think there's a West Sacramento, um, foundation, and just asking if, you know, um, in your work, Babs, uh, tomorrow, what the differences will be, you know, if they have, um, if they benefit, um, di- different organizations, so they both are effective, um, or are they duplicative in some way? So just in looking into that, if you can provide some more, um, background on that, thank you.
Councilmember Roscoe.
I just think on top of that, I mean, the, the question is, you know, how much of that money is coming back to West Sacramento nonprofits? But even for me, it's a little bit more, I mean, I don't mind necessarily, it's not a deal breaker for me that it's a West Sacramento nonprofit, but rather that the nonprofit that is serving the community, that, that the money would get back to people in West Sacramento. I mean, it's like, you know, Yolo Food Bank isn't necessarily a, a West Sacramento nonprofit, but yet, you know, hundreds of people are coming and getting food, you know? And so, you know, I, I know you anticipate that, but that's just my, my perspective on that.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Sandin, Babs, for all the work on this. We have the right person, and you're already thinking about, um, the, the right questions. Um, I, I, I am supportive of this, uh, as well. Um, but I, I too have some, um, uh, some things you're thinking about that I want to underscore, and, 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 uh, it is around how will the steering committee and the, and the governance structure of this set the priorities for this foundation? And I know this because I think we're all reading about it, or you're reading about it, about the demands that you're seeing. And as the mayor pointed, pointed out rightly so, around, um, kind of the state of the economy, um, that the demands for resources are going to be extremely high. And there's going to be a lot of, I, I think the way this is set it up, but where do, where do we put those money to what, to what types of re, what types of nonprofits or what types of other services? That our money goes to a pot that allocates that, right? So what are the priorities and, and what, what are its focus areas going to be? Much like we thought about, uh, Measure E or Measure N or wha- whatever, we, we, we've tried to take taxpayer money and focus on priority areas of services, um, and that's not clear. There's a number of services, and the part I'm just very, very conscious of is just the, the demand of, uh, on these types of, um, services. Is this going to be extremely high? And it's, and I'm, I'm fearful of, because we don't have a sense of where we are, or are we at a bottom? What's the new normal, or what, whatever that is, right? But that, that, that we're never going to meet somebody's expectations with this. And, 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 um, and so I, I, I just, that's one area, kind of a prioritization. I think you, 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 you kind of pointed that out. Um, I, I do have, uh, share, uh, some of the concern around kind of how the local, how, how, how the money will come back to West Sacramento, and not just a geographic equity, you know, where it's split five, five ways, you know, whatever, between, as we do, and some are other JPAs or districts, it's, there's, there's a kind of pro rata share that goes out. But it does need to focus on, and I think we've learned in the past, is kind of where the, where the most need is. If we have focus areas, areas of kind of where this, how these dollars are allocated, just, it's also got to think about kind of the impacts on the, on the, on whatever we're focused on. So whether it's on homeless or whether it's on food services, or, you know, we, we, we take in quite a bit of that because we, we're closer to the urban core, or we are the urban core. So again, there's, we have a different set of issues than we have in Woodland or in Davis or in Winters. And no, I'm not saying they don't have, but tho- those sorts of issues. I'm just, uh, what I'm suggesting, though, is, is as you, as you go forward, that's part of the, 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 the thing we have to think about is, is think about those priorities, then that kind of, that, that kind of puts together a picture of where, where are the, where is that problem most, uh, most, most significant? And then the, the, the last one is just kind of related to that, is this, is this, is this making a financial decision of twenty-five thousand dollars does not seem like a lot and, at the moment. And I'm just being marking it off because the, as the needs grow, the, the ask will come back. And I, we don't have any context right now, at least I don't. And, um, it's hard, I know we've had these discussions before in council about other, uh, issues, financial issues, whether, whether it's labor negotiations or whether it's, uh, uh, supporting of cap, um, of, of, of capital project, whatever things we're working on, it, we, we have some context budget-wise what this means. And I know, I'm, I'm, Roberta and Aaron and the team are thinking about these things. Uh, but as we talk, we're, we're six weeks in, and that data's not there, we don't know what's ahead. And I am looking forward, I looked ahead to the staff report and saw that, I think we're looking at, Aaron, I think they said the first week of May, uh, that we might start circling back on these financial decisions. But as time marches on, and without the, we're going to have, I, I fear that this won't be the only ask we have towards something that's important. So, um, this isn't immediate need because I think we're all, uh, ha- have participated in, in the food giveaways. We just heard from, uh, Supervisor Viegas and, 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 and the great work that he's done and bringing county services to the city and, and, and making them really visible and, and really effective at a time when we need it most. And, um, I, I'm just very cautious of that as, as the need is, the need may be growing, we just, it hasn't caught us yet. And so I, I, I'm kind of marking this off for Aaron, really, not so much, and, 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 and Babs, as you go forward, and this is how that, that, that ask, that you have that kind of eye on us is, uh, because we all have it, I think, when we go to our other, uh, agencies that we sit on their boards for, is that we, we have to be, have an eye on, how is this going to impact us financially downstream? Is this, are we, are we staying within scope? Are we going to be, um, caught, is this a cost or while the, you know, again, we, we just, we just have to be always honest. And the problem we have now is we don't know how, where, where we are in this financial situation. And, and I'm not, I know people got to do their work, we probably have, they'll, they'll have a right gate in from March to see the full impact. We're really going to see it in April, um, the, the, the drain on sales taxes, uh, whether property taxes are being affected by its collections or by the values, it, it's going to be time. And, and so, uh, I'm just kind of marking off a, kind of a rope line around the fact that it, when do we, when is it time to come back to cities and ask for more contributions? And it just, we, we, we've got to build in some sort of trigger point or some, uh, I, I just don't want this to, to feel like we've got this now, oh, we, we've got all this demand because we, we, we've, we've really sunk our teeth into this and look at all the need. Um, because I, I, that's the part I worry about. And so I'm supportive of it, we know we're going to need it, but without any context, it's hard to project how much more we may or need it and or may, may be able to contribute. So that's my thoughts, thank you.
I think one, one thing I'd, I'd add to that, because we're, we're four weeks into the shelter order, or a month into the shelter order. Um, and from the governor's press conference, and really from every other public health, um, advisory that's out there, we're not going to be leaving, uh, we're not going to be leaving shelter en masse, um, for quite some time. Uh, so, uh, so this is, this is important and it's urgent. It isn't, in, in the sense that, you know, and, uh, a nonprofit organization that is about to go out of business tomorrow because we didn't, you know, we didn't join last week, um, isn't going to make it for the next three, four, five, six months. And so as we're looking at particularly the twenty-five percent of the money that is for the sustainability of organizations, the right, the, the seventy-five percent that's for direct service, that is a critical need, but, and it's going to be a critical need for a long time. Um, and the twenty-five percent, you don't want, I mean, if, if, if you, you, you wanted to, you wanted to deploy those dollars for organizations that it's going to make a difference for, I mean, to be pretty, just like, like, like we're triage in the healthcare system, and we kind of have to here, and if, if, if you can't make it on your own till, till, till June or July, um, then this is not, it's, it's, that, that's not an investment necessarily that, that as a foundation I would prioritize compared to the other organizations, um, because we, because we're not going to be able to come back every two weeks with twenty-five thousand dollars more. We do know that much. Um, and, uh, and, and, and as, as Councilmember Ledesma says, you know, we just don't, we're, we're flying blind right now. We'll know more in a couple of weeks when we get, when, when we get our own fiscal report. But we'll also know a little bit more about what the state's doing, what others are doing, and the, and the status of some of the, the community non, the community nonprofits too.
And, and, and if I can, Mr. Mayor, because I know you're, you're having conversations, uh, with the conference of mayors around, uh, even the, 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 the next phase of, of the economic package coming out of the federal government. We're, A, we're not the federal government, right? So I, I think about even the funding issues going on at the federal level. We, we just can't make up another two hundred fifty billion dollars tomorrow and say, oh, the, the, the demand is there, so we got to come up with more, and we, we can't do that, especially, you know, given bond, because we're, we're flying, flying. But you also pointed out that, you know, the current, uh, direction at the, at the federal level, uh, is, is focused on local government and smaller local governments and CDBG funding, and all those sorts of things that would really help us, but we don't know where we're going to need to deploy that. And, and so that, that's kind of our point is, even though we may be getting all this funding, it's hard for us to make policy decisions around where we're going without, based, because, because we don't even know what core services may be impacted by all this in, in, in thirty days to six months, we, we don't know. And so, again, there's so much we don't know, it's just hard to, like, look at, look at anything as, as sort of a long-term investment.
Yeah. Uh, so that, that reminds me that, that in addition, the, so the governor's chief service officer is on the same panel that, that I'm on, that's working on this deployment issues. And, uh, the, you know, all, everybody from the Peace Corps has been recalled. Um, they, all the AmeriCorps folks are right now doing virtual service, right? There's a, there's an enormous core of the formal volunteerism and service, um, uh, human capital that's out there right now already. And then in addition to that, there are, are millions of Americans and probably thousands of West Sacramentoans that want to get engaged and help, um, that are, aren't, that, so far, we don't have the mechanisms to connect all these folks to support the nonprofits and the services that they are doing, um, but we, we could envision doing that. And as we, as we do move to the, the, the massive testing and contact tracing, um, you know, one, one way out for, one way to survive and to thrive for some, for some of the nonprofits in our community and countywide is to meet, is to, is to meet the moment, as the governor would say, and to think about how the, the food bank or the Children's Alliance or others could, could, uh, be a part of that solution, which is going to require a community-wide effort, and that will come with resources, um, both human and, and catch. Um, and so I think, you know, we have the opportunity to, uh, to, to, you know, to help and work with them, with our, with our nonprofit sector. That obviously doesn't work for everyone, um, but we have the opportunity to help them connect to the resource, to other sorts of resources and changes in the economy that are coming too.
Okay. Sorry, I'm not, not hearing.
Yeah, yeah, so this one's not for action, this, this particular subitem is not for actions to get feedback from the council for your, for staff and for, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Sandin.
Yeah, absolutely, and that was very helpful feedback. Um, we have, our, uh, Vice Mayor has a meeting tomorrow. Um, I know, uh, Tracy has follow-up meetings, and, and between the three of us, we can, uh, make sure, uh, the feedback is relayed. And, uh, like I said, we'll bring this back potentially at a future meeting. Um, I won't say next week for sure, but, uh, I know they're looking forward to getting, uh, money out the door, so it won't be too long for, for. uh, money out the door, so it won't be too long before we want to be making a decision either way. So, uh, so that completes, um, that item unless there's any other uh, feedback from the council, like I can move on to the rest of the update.
And Portem, Cindy?
Yeah, I, um, I really appreciate the, the feedback and I was taking notes as my, as you all were, um, sharing your, your questions and thoughts and suggestions. Um, but because this is a three-pronged, um, kind of, uh, plan or initiative, it does involve some technical support that's being provided to the non, nonprofit community. And so, uh, Mayor, to your point about meeting the moment, I think there is some work, just so you, you're aware that's being done to, to help connect nonprofits in Yolo County with some of the opportunities and to help them with, uh, sustainability and thinking about the questions of viability, which of course are, um, on, on many of their minds and thinking about even combining forces and thinking differently about what the future might look like. So that, there's some, some work that's being done through this initiative, but not directly to the fund, the fund question itself that's before us. And then it struck me, if you don't mind my sharing this, that some of the, um, issues that were brought up by Mr. Ledesma, Councilmember Ledesma, go back to your initial concern about the governance as some of the questions actually need a governance, um, answer. And so I don't know, it hel, it helps to have our representative, um, um, Parks and Rec on, that he was representing the city on that committee on the call. But some of the, like, some of the questions at the moment in the structure it's in, I won't, I won't have the, um, vote or the authority as it's organized to be able to, to change that. So, um, with regard to the prioritizations, et cetera, that's, that, that is not in the, currently in the purview of the Leadership Advisory Group. Here, um, my understanding is we're going to be asked to help educate the community writ large about the importance of nonprofits and then also to encourage individual donations. Um, people to give where, kind of where their, their, their heart is to nonprofits that matter to them. So a more, a broader education program, so that's one of the other pieces. But, um, I do think we need to grapple with your question, Mr. Mayor, your initial question, um, as we, as we're thinking this through.
All right. Thanks, Mayor Portem, and so, to Laurel?
Okay, um, so thank you for that, um, good feedback. And now I'll turn your attention to the attachment one, I'm just going to give a couple of updates, uh, here. Uh, mainly pointing out some differences in the report that, uh, we had talked about a little bit last time. Um, ge- getting more data from us in terms of both, uh, the COVID-19 situation in the county in West Sacramento, but also ongoing, um, city services. So, uh, these aren't, uh, pretty dashboard graphs yet, but I'll be working on that as we go forward as we gather more data to put them into uh, different formats, but what you have for you today is a series of tables. Uh, I think the important thing is, is on the first one, uh, what I tried to do is show a week-to-week, uh, progression of, of the case development in, uh, the county. Uh, today, I, I can update you in the report, uh, these numbers are current as of five o'clock yesterday. That's when the, uh, Public Health Office, uh, releases new data. So as of five o'clock, uh, today, unfortunately, we had a, a quite a bit of a jump in Yolo County. Uh, there were 26, um, I'm sorry, uh, 14 new cases, bringing the total number in the county, uh, to 116. Um, there were also a lot more, uh, tests, maybe 60 or so more tests. So there's a total of, uh, a little over 11, 1140 now, I believe. Uh, and unfortunately, there were, uh, three additional, uh, COVID-19 related deaths in the county, uh, bringing that total to seven. Um, in West Sacramento, um, as noted in the report, the only data that's aggregated, uh, that isn't aggregated countywide are the number of cases and the number of hospitalizations over the course of, of time. Uh, so in West Sacramento, there was one new case reported today, so that brings our total in the city to 40. And, um, there are still 15 hospitalizations, at least, uh, going from the data on the county dashboard. Uh, so I can tell you, we'll be tracking that, um, day to day like we have been. Uh, we're in constant communication with the, with the county EOC and Public Health Office, uh, and watching for trends. And, uh, more importantly, watching for, uh, clusters of outbreaks. And, uh, like we've done in the past, when, when those happen, uh, we work with their office to jump on, uh, mitigation efforts, uh, including communications, that sort of thing, uh, to try to minimize the, the impact of those. Uh, the mayor mentioned the, the, uh, importance, uh, going forward of, uh, the combination of widespread testing, uh, which we really don't have a good control over, but, um, hopefully it's something that's on its way. But more importantly, on the contact tracing side, I just wanted to mention that it's something that our EOC is in the process of gathering more information from the county EOC and the Public Health Office to not only get a handle on what their plan is going forward, but also trying to figure out the best ways for, uh, the city and, and other organizations in the city who know it best. And, um, the mayor alluded to this earlier, uh, for how we can be helpful in that, uh, going forward. And that's, that's not a next week thing or even, even if it's getting into next month, but it's, that's an ongoing uh, effort that's going to be necessary to really start to contain this thing. Uh, so we are engaging in those conversations, it's very early right now, but, um, we're, uh, definitely, um, uh, seeing what we can do to position, um, the city and the county, uh, to do that most effectively. So that's the data on COVID-19 cases. In that same section, we did include some, uh, updated information on calls for service. Uh, starting with public safety, you'll notice that, uh, police and fire, uh, fired over the course of the last, uh, month or so. I've seen a little bit of an increase, but, but really want to draw your attention to the last three weeks. Uh, we are trending lower than normal on call volume. Um, that's, that's been true for the police department also. Um, th- there's a lot of things you could take from that. I, I think the main, uh, thing that we, we were concerned about was that both we'd see a, a high number of medical calls, uh, that will put a strain on our, our fire resources. Fortunately, um, that hasn't been the case thus far. Uh, just not to say that we're not dealing with challenging situations in this, in this environment, uh, but at least the call volume has been fairly steady. On the public safety, on the, uh, police side, uh, the, a bit of the worry was with the shelter in place order in effect, uh, what would be the corresponding effect on, uh, calls for service, uh, for police services? And thus far, um, it, it's been lower. Uh, we have been watching some key indicators like the number of domestic violence calls. Uh, those are also not higher than normal. So, uh, so far, um, that, that hasn't been a, a trend. Uh, but we're going to continue to watch those numbers. Uh, the police department has been doing a, a really good job as they always do with, uh, data collection, uh, by, um, types of crime, uh, much like you've seen in, in previous reports, quarterly reports they do. Um, at a future meeting, we were, we were thinking of, of presenting some of that data in a more, um, expanded form, uh, just to give you a sense of some of the trends that we've been, we've been tracking and seeing, uh, since the COVID-19 emergency started, uh, compared to where things have been, um, on historic averages. So that would be something we would look to maybe give you an update on in, in, uh, we're thinking in May. Um, so going on in the, in that section, uh, public works maintenance, uh, similarly, the calls for service have actually been down. Um, again, there was a concern about with everyone staying home, uh, would have put more of a demand on, uh, calls for the simple things that, that happen at home where, uh, the sewers get clogged and things like that. And thus far, uh, they've been averaging about seven calls a day, whereas their normal volume has been closer to 10. Um, and keep in mind, they're also operating on a, on a, a weekly shift. Uh, they're alternating shifts, so their personnel numbers per day are, uh, much lower than normal. So it's a good thing they're not getting a whole bunch more calls because that would obviously be a lot more challenging. Uh, on the public health order enforcement, that's something, as you know, we have, uh, tasked our code enforcement division with being the uh, go-to on that. So they get the calls and complaints and then they work with the county public health office if necessary to make determinations. Uh, thus far, we've received about 40 of those. Uh, you can see from that chart that most of those occurred in the first couple of weeks of the order. Um, I can tell you, uh, from our code enforcement manager, uh, reporting that all 40 of those cases have been investigated and concluded. Um, so I think that process has been working very well. Uh, the way it's trending right now, it's becoming more about, um, small gatherings occurring even in residential areas. So, uh, so we're receiving those, um, those complaints or inquiries from either West Sac Connect or the Code Enforcement Line. Both of those, um, a link and a number are in the report for anyone, um, needing that information. The city has set up a call center out of the courtyard, uh, similar to what we do when we have, uh, holidays or, or, um, the closures, uh, during those times. Uh, this is a little unprecedented though, but, uh, the staff there really doing a really good job of, uh, taking in all the calls that would normally be routed to City Hall and the other offices during business hours. Um, typically, they get calls like that, uh, throughout the day when we're, we're in a normal situation just because sometimes calls get routed there and then get routed to other buildings. So that's about, uh, 35 a day right now. Um, the, the normal rate is about 20, so it's not overwhelming. Um, you can see, we, we gave you some information on the types of, uh, topics that people have been calling about. Uh, there's a large number of calls in the other category and I was told, uh, today that, that had to do with, um, their normal calls for service. So, uh, some are related to capital projects, uh, some are related to service calls. But in general, you can see it's kind of a, a mix across the board. Um, calls related to community development and economic development, various topics are the top category. We can try to get a, a more precise breakdown of what those have been, if there's interest for that. Um, and then I'll, I'll also mention that this report, uh, for the first time includes a summary of all the city's activities on social media. Um, as you know, the Communications, Community Relations Division has been, um, extremely busy. Um, much more so than, uh, they're already busy on, on a normal day. Uh, but during this, this, uh, emergency situation, they've been, as you know, during daily updates, uh, but also producing videos and all sorts of other content to be helpful in putting information out, uh, using our social media channels. So we thought it'd be helpful to give you a, a picture of, of what that has looked like, uh, since the emergency began. So that's highlighted in that, uh, communications section. Uh, we'll continue to report on that as, as time goes on, uh, just to give you an idea of what, um, information is getting the most attention among our residents. Um, so, uh, I can, I can stop there if you'd like before I get into, uh, uh, I just have a few other updates, um, that I could finish.
Yeah, I think our intent was to go through the whole, the entire report and then we'll do a, a, a one round of questions and comments.
Sure. So yeah, just really briefly, I've just done a few other updates. Um, one significant update that just we learned today on, on related to childcare. I mentioned last time that the Children's Home Society was providing funding, uh, for people, essential workers who are in need of childcare. Uh, we received word today that they are now accepting applications. Um, the, the funds are available through June 30th for free childcare as long as the, uh, basic eligibility requirements to that program are met. Uh, one or both parents have to be an essential worker under the, uh, the, the state guidelines. And, uh, if both are not, um, that one is unable to provide care for some reason. Um, and that also their family assets don't exceed a million dollars. Uh, we'll, we'll provide a link to this information on the city's website and get it out, uh, through our, uh, other channels as soon as possible. But we just learned that this afternoon, so that's a big help for, um, paying for childcare for essential workers, uh, during this time. We also, the Home Run Division, um, in addition to all the work they've been doing around childcare, uh, they started producing online workshops. I may have mentioned this last week, but I just want to mention it again. Uh, the workshops are geared, uh, to families, um, that are coping with, uh, the stress of being at home and everything that goes with that. Uh, they're being hosted by early learning specialists and, uh, designed to give families information and support on how to deal with that, uh, while they're at home. Um, there's information in the report about how we're getting the word out on those. And then, uh, I believe the last update I was going to give tonight was just a quick one on, uh, Project Room Key. That's the homeless housing, um, initiative statewide, but in West Sacramento, it's been particularly, uh, active as of, um, I believe it was on Monday. We had 74 homeless individuals in West Sacramento that are receiving, uh, temporary shelter in motel rooms. Um, seven of them are over 65, the rest are, uh, deemed medically vulnerable. And that was really the target of this program was to get those that are most at risk of COVID-19 transmission into housing where they can safely isolate. We have a total of 86 motel rooms that the county has put under lease control. Um, and that's, that's a, uh, a, the number plus the number in the other cities, I believe, on a per capita basis, we're way above what the rest of the state's doing. So been very impressive to watch that work happening at the county level and with our homeless housing task force on staff. Uh, we also are starting a, a county-wide group, um, of the housing, um, specialists that are beginning to work on what happens once that program winds down. Uh, we know that'll eventually, that day will come, uh, both in terms of returning the properties, but also transitioning the homeless residents, uh, once they, um, leave the temporary housing. So just a, just a heads up that that's happening, um, not sure where it's going to go, but we, we felt that it was important to get ahead of that issue uh, before it's, um, it's here. So, uh, that concludes the updates I was going to cover. If you have any questions about any of the other items, I'm happy to answer. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Laurel, thank you. So we're going to, uh, do a round of, uh, council member questions or comments. Are there any? Councilmember Guerrero?
Uh, yes, um, thank you for that very good update, Aaron. You're doing a great job, um, across the board. I did have a question regarding, um, the shelter in place modifying that. And I know the governor earlier this week had presented, um, like a, a six-part plan. And it included, um, ha- having access to testing and, uh, contact tracing. And from what I've read in the Yolo County, um, Board of Supervisors update, um, that our health officer says we have 0.5% testing as of now. So it's really short in Yolo County. Um, do you, you know, if we're looking at, um, future events, you know, such as the State of the City address, um, which are coming, you know, just right around the corner, what are our plans as we modify the shelter in place to have such large events? Because, um, the governor was pretty clear that having mass gatherings, um, could, could, you know, have a negative impact on the progress we've made so far. So is there something we're doing to track what we can do to modify our shelter in place at this point?
Well, let me start by saying that the shelter in place and the decision to modify it at all is, um, is at the county level with the public health official. Uh, but it's also based on, um, any, uh, guidance or other directives that come from the state level. So, um, any, any change to the current order would be in consultation with us. Uh, but also, um, it really does occur at that county level. Um, I will say though, in terms of, uh, big events that are, that are either, um, on the horizon or, uh, were anticipated. I mean, you mentioned State of the City, that, that's actually been postponed already, uh, by the chamber on a proactive basis. So, uh, we do have a slate of other events that, that were on the horizon, uh, that our, that our Parks Department would be coordinating special events permits. Uh, we've already put people on notice and everyone's very understanding that it's very unlikely we're going to be, um, having any of those events anytime soon. Uh, we, I, I believe we've actually canceled everything through the month of May for sure. Uh, but, you know, I think it, it stands to reason that beyond that, um, it's, it's unlikely that we're going to be in a place where we could start to have those, uh, types of events like the, the marathons that began in, in West Sacramento are a good example of that. Those are very popular. Uh, but like I said, we're going to be, uh, consulting with the county public health official. Uh, we're going to be following the order, um, that ultimately is their decision. Uh, but looking ahead, we've been advising anyone who has that type of event that, um, you know, it's really unlikely that it's going to be anytime soon before those take place. So I don't know if that answers the question, but, um, that's, that's kind of how we're handling it right now.
It does. And you know, there, there, um, the governor's guidance, um, was helpful to provide some level of perspective that we're not going to go back to business as usual or back to that normal level of, you know, connection, that the social distancing is going to be a long-term plan. And using other ways to, um, connect in public is going to be much different than what we experienced today.
Right.
And Mayor Portem, Cindy?
Thank you, um, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Laurel, I wanted to thank you for adding, for asking staff and for you doing the reviews of the additional data charts that you, you provided. I, I think they give us a nice snapshot and we can kind of keep on the pulse of, of things and try to understand trends that we're seeing. I hope it's not too onerous, um, but I'm, I, I think it's really helpful data. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll say the departments, um, typically track that data, um, anyway. So I don't think it's, uh, it's very, um, labor-intensive for them. Um, but also I think it is helpful for all of us, uh, myself included, uh, to see how things are trending. So thanks.
Other, uh, Councilmember Ledesma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Aaron, and, and the team that's listening in and doesn't have their video showing, but I know you're listening intently. But thanks to all of you for your extraordinary work and your perseverance and resiliency on, on keeping things going at the city. Um, and, um, uh, it's just, it's showing. And I was looking at the, the data you had brought in, um, specifically the Zen City data, which is, uh, kind of highlighting a point that I think the mayor brought up a couple of weeks ago, which is the, the, um, uh, the city sentiment, they, they, they're supporting the shelter in place, but they're also getting more vigilant around maybe going outside of the shelter. more vigilant around maybe going outside of the shelter in place. And so that seems to be the sentiment. And, and on that note, um, and I know uh, our uh, council member Guerrero brought it up, which is the discussion around um, um, what uh, the governor had brought up in terms of uh, where we're going. I, I, I just think it's really important um, that we're just four weeks into our uh, sort of emergency operation. Um, it's becoming more and more apparent um, that the effects of this are, are going to be long-lasting and culturally significant. Um, and I, I feel terrible for the seniors at River State High School who won't have a senior year ending as they traditionally do. Uh, my daughters included in the, in, in, in the seniors that are missing that. And I know we have friends that are in the same and, and it's, it's not easy. I think about when we can get back to life. But we have to set the tone. I think part of our, our job is to help lead through this and start to build the cultural norms that things aren't going to be the same. And uh, businesses aren't going to be the same. Uh, schools aren't going to be the same. Uh, events are going to be the same. Um, I'm not trying to be draconian. It's just, it's just we're, we're going to have to really be vigilant because there will be a, we, we still don't know what we're going to look like. Um, and I joined the council and uh, at the end of two thousand ten and two thousand eleven, and nobody saw the things we saw coming, coming. It was, it, it happened in a lot more evolving time. This one happened all in a matter of weeks. And it's, it is really difficult in every conversation I'm in professionally and and talking about city business to foresee what, what exactly this will have in store for us and what it will mean for life. And uh, some things um, will take for, for the better. Um, um, that might have changed our lives, but I, I just want to really be careful, uh, Aaron, as you start to think about the events or think, think about just projecting where we're going in the city when we're done with this. I think we just have to manage what we have in front of us. Um, I know we, we will have to address, I think it's the, at the end of the month is when we'll have to, um, I, I think we gave the, the emergency powers up until that point, that we'll have to look at those again. Um, but again, I, I just really caution the, the city to start, you know, just, just worry or, or, or think about and the city staff is to focus on what's in front of us. And a lot of that will be what services we can provide, what, what things need to be impacted. Where do we need to be to make sure we're providing our citizens uh, the services they need in, in the most efficient way to help them get through that. And as we learn more about where we are in a month, uh, and uh, we'll address that then. So I just really want to caution that point, but I, I just want to say also, thank you. Uh, these are really extraordinary times. I have to remind myself and my team at work and uh, these are just this a, a generation is, two generations or three have never dealt with this and uh, and we are. And I'm, I'm happy to be serving along with all of you. Um, and uh, that we have the right leadership at the right time and and I'm, I'm very confident with Aaron, you and your team will, will get through this too. So just want to say thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you. And, and I just want to give a quick note on that. Uh, you mentioned the expiration of the emergency declaration period. Um, it was for sixty days. I believe the expiration is, I'm looking at May fifteenth. Um, and that coincides with the May thirteenth council meeting. Um, we'll know a lot more by then, as you said. Uh, but that's also when we plan to really get into um, information on the budget. And uh, so it, it could actually be the, the same, the same meeting. We could extend the declaration if needed. Uh, those aren't necessarily related topics, but um, uh, but in terms of what we'll know, we'll know a lot more about that situation. We'll definitely know a lot more about the budget. That's one of the reasons we're pushing that out a little bit, just to uh, give it, give it more time for um, some of that information and projections to, to be more sound.
And, and I, I not note, I, I, I'm, and we can talk offline certainly. Um, I, I'm just having a hard time waiting until May fifteenth to have a, have a co- conference, conversation about what we're seeing.
Yeah, we're happy to do it.
Yeah.
With the council.
And not, yeah, and not get in the way of what the actual works and.
Right, okay.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Thank you. Um, you know, Aaron, since we began meeting, which seems like forever and was pretty freaking early on with all of this, it just seems like so many weeks passed, but um, you've been so, you're, you and staff have been so responsive to all of our comments and, and feedback, and I appreciate that. And one thing that I, I noticed um, and I appreciated a lot was the online stress management workshop for families. Um, and I'm sure that that came from some of the feedback, but also just the, the ideas that our staff has about what, what it, what are, what is needed. And I mean, we all know, I mean, right now, and every year, we're always doing child abuse prevention month now and doing a proclamation and talking about it. I don't know what the stats are in Yolo County with respect to this, but again, we aren't really on and some folks are still adjusting to the new normal. Um, but I, I do appreciate the resources um, that we're putting out there, um, you know, and how we're focusing them on, on families and teens. Um, it, it does occur to me though, that you know, there are some families that um, you know, we put out the resources, right? But it, it doesn't necessarily mean that every child in the community has a Chromebook or every parent has access to online uh, resources, you know, in their home, or even, you know, whether or not they would access it. I mean, I'm sure they're culturally appropriate, but even if they would be, you know, there, there'd be a magnet toward it. Um, but I mean, I, I had a team meeting today where we talked about what we could do um, i- i- to respond to, you know, any uptick um, in child abuse cases. And it just occurs to me that, you know, we have organizations in, in the city um, that are reaching out to communities that, that are um, you know, a little bit more disenfranchised and or um, uh, underserved. That's the best way of putting it. And um, you know, to the extent that um, you know, we're doing our thing with early childhood and, and, and um, with our home run division and stuff, but to partner with those organizations that do um, do home visits and get into the homes or, or at least do um, I guess we're not getting physically into the homes right now, but they're already in, in infrastructure for, for reaching folks that would already be at risk. Um, or at least know somebody who is at risk. So anyway, I just wanted to, to um, say thank you uh, to all the staff for all of the, the efforts. And the other thing is, you know, um, I, I know that at least the mayor this week is, is gone around the city and, and um, you know, is looking at uh, some of the uh, problem spots and, and some of the great things. I mean, there are so many wonderful things that have rolled out. Um, people that are finding different ways of engaging with one another, whether, you know, it's, it's not the way we traditionally do it, but um, there are also folks that quite frankly, aren't being as careful as we would hope. And um, I know that, you know, SAC PD and other law enforcement agencies are now um, going to be ramping up enforcement a little bit more for those folks. Um, at least, you know, not that, I don't know what we're doing specifically yet, but um, I know that people in the region are talking about um, really cracking down on folks who are blatantly offending um, the shelter in place order and gathering and, and having, you know, parties in the street and, you know, um, gatherings on the front lawn with absolute strangers. And I just, you know, we, we it's hard because you don't want to uh, you know, come down on folks for, because we don't know everybody's specific situation, but at the same time, I mean, there are some folks that need to be reminded that, you know, the longer we're doing this, the longer we're going to be in this situation. And so I just, I guess the question is, um, have we, are, are we um, discussing where we are with respect to enforcement?
Um, yeah, I mean, we, we continue to um, be active in the enforcement side where we, we rely on receiving referrals from people. So uh, we're not, you know, we're not at a, we're far from being in a mode where um, you know, there's some law enforcement-driven proactive measure put in place to crack down. Uh, what we're doing instead is really uh, putting the resource to um, the West Sat Connect and, and hotline that we, we have set up uh, to make those reports. And we've been receiving them. We've been following up on everyone that we receive. Um, combine that with the other efforts we've been doing, um, the simple things like uh, uh, I, I'll use one example of taking rims down in parks on basketball hoops. Uh, for example, we, we are a little frustrated. We had to go there. Uh, but we, we had plenty of reports and, and evidence of of people not following the, the order by playing group sports. And so uh, we, we take a lot of different measures like that. A lot of them are in the report, um, give you examples, but um, the hope is that we continue to get through this without having to go to a more um, active enforcement um, process. Um, I think some of the, the things that we've been seeing around the country, um, acts of defiance, if you will. Um, we, we hope we won't be seeing that sort of thing, but uh, but we're, we're watching what's happening. We're watching and learning from other agencies and how they're responding. Um, and I think we'll be ready for those types of situations if they come up. Um, but yeah, I don't, I don't know if I'm uh, answering your question there, but relying on the system we set up more than anything to uh, follow up on, on inquiries and complaints and then doing things practically as a city to discourage type of behavior that's uh, most concerned.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I, I mean, I think it, the, 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 the governor did this as well, and I do think it's, it's important to reflect on the success that we've had um, as a community. Um, and the, you know, cases have gone up and the fatalities have gone up and hospitalizations have gone up, but nowhere near the curve that we were all, that we've all been working together as a community to battle. Um, and, and the key, you know, the case number is a challenge because of, it's so closely related to how much testing is done and where. Um, but cases haven't, have not gone in an exponential curve. Hospitalizations grew, but they also have not grown exponentially. Um, and deaths have grown, but, but not, but not even um, not even a straight line. So um, there's been a real impact in our community and our county on, of, of the measures that have been taken and of uh, both by government, but also by individual citizens and small businesses and others in order to to not just comply with the orders, but to, to, to live up to their spirit. Um, and to make sure that everyone stays safe and a recognition that any of us can be asymptomatic carriers and uh, that we have to protect our our responders, our health workers and all the other essential uh, uh, folks that are, that are out there as well as the most vulnerable, most at risk. Um, so we, we have seen, you know, some significant progress and, and, and that's been true statewide as well. Um, uh, as the governor said, that, that's a cause for both celebration and, and worry that if, if it causes us to let up. Uh, because the issues that councilmember Roscoe raised are very real. Like, it's, she's right. I, I biked around virtually every park uh, over the last week. Um, it's not scientific because I don't go at the same time every day and, and randomly sample people. Um, uh, and the vast majority of folks are doing what needs to be done in order to, 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 to keep the virus under control and stop transmission. But there are, there are, there are some significant and pretty, pretty flagrant violations. And I think the worry is um, uh, that, that everyone in the public health community has is that as we celebrate the success and as we flatten the curve, um, that compliance will go down. And if, and if that occurs, if the sense of we're all in this together, we're all basically in wartime solidarity together diminishes and, and we don't see the same level of, of uh, com- of uh, compliance, then it is going to be absolutely necessary to do, you know, strict, even stricter enforcement than is already underway. Right? We cannot run away from that. I know we all want to say to our constituents, don't worry, you're not going to get picked up or whatever. Um, but we can't guarantee that long run if we, if we don't maintain the level of fidelity to the social distancing guidelines um, that are, that, that are out there and they have worked so effectively um, statewide and in our community. I also really appreciate what the governor did in terms of laying out the six criteria and the metrics underneath them, as well as some additional information that he provided yesterday at the press conference, because while there is still a lot we don't know about how and when we're going to exit the uh, this particular intervention of, of uh, of stay at home and, and a sort of extreme uh, social distancing. He laid out a set, a, a set of criteria for how we will know. Um, and that means we can do the same thing uh, and, and locally. So we don't need to be in a position any longer where we're like, well, we're not sure if there's going to be events of a thousand people in May. No, it's absolutely certain uh, from, from the criteria that have been laid out, there will be no mass events of a thousand people in May. As, we, we know that already. So we're not, we're not doing anybody any favors by continuing to be uncertain about it when we know. Um, and uh, so, so sort of back, walking backwards, reverse engineering those criteria. Um, we can see where, where they're headed. We can see when the timing is coming. It's one of the reasons why I, I volunteered to, to work on the deployment of testing and contract, contact tracing work is that that's likely to be the most critical path, uh, the, the biggest critical path blockage in those six criteria. And so until we, until we are able to figure that problem out, we may not be able to relax social distancing in any significant way uh, at all. Uh, but we can look forward to it. And the reason I think, uh, and I'm, I'm not, I don't, I, I think I'm in, I think I'm agreeing with councilmember Ledesma, it may not sound like it, but but part of the reason why I want to get ahead of some of these issues and decide, or at least have the path for how we're going to decide them now is that um, you know, we should, if, if we can figure out a, a set of events criteria, for example, now, that it relate to what the governor has done. Um, because the governor said he was going to defer heavily to localities in uh, and you know, in the health orders and everything else. Then in the summer and the fall, when we may be grappling with, with, where are we going to make cuts? How are we going to deal with maintaining basic services? We're not also grappling with issues that we could have addressed or at least figured out how to address earlier on. Um, so I think both in terms of, of, of looking at some of the criteria that the governor's laid out, we should start applying those and looking at, and we can see the trends just as well as he can to some extent and start making um, some plans in that, in that regard. And then understanding that this testing, this testing and tracing regime is critical. Um, and it's the number one thing on, on, it's on his list and on the multi-state compact list for Oregon and Washington as well, as well as for the Northeast um, set of states. That that's number one. And so uh, as the city manager said, readying ourselves to, to, to be among the first to be able to deploy that if the, if the, when, when the, the materials and the swaps and the test kits come out, whenever, if we're first in line to do that, then we'll be first in line to be able to um, to move forward to that next regime, which every, which all the public health science says will be far less costly to the economy and to communities, but also much more effective in, in preventing the transmission um, of the virus itself. So that, 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 that seems like it's a very critical uh, through line for us to be able to deliver on what we know is needed in our community, but also what the governor has laid out in terms of a very clear path, uh, path forward. Uh, Bishop Ledesma?
No, I'm, I, I just wanted to, um, we are in agreement and, and I think that the thing uh, is, is, I want to say is you're right, the markers haven't put out the, the handwriting's on the wall of what it's going to look like, at least the, the pathway of what, what the governor's laid out, of, of what sort of opening backup might look like, at least the signs of it. So I appreciate and thank you for, for uh, volunteering, take that path. And I mean, I mean, we, we've got to be on the forefront of that effort. And um, we've done that before, about ten years ago, right? And we saw the handwriting was on wall, on the wall and um, and uh, I think at the time, a certain mayor was uh, opposed to a task force that may look ahead and say the right handwriting on the wall, but uh, I see you, you're, you're, you're volunteering for the task force now, which is good. So, but I think that's the absolute right thing we need to do. We need to be looking ahead and and, and seeing how we can be at the forefront of it so that we're advanced. I think that's absolutely the right step. So, and we're, we're in total agreement on that. So thank you.
Right. Thank you. Then we have the, the, just the action item on the vacation accrual caps. Uh, so is there a motion on that?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
It's been moved by councilmember Guerrero and seconded by councilmember Ledesma. Is there any further debate or discussion? Mayor Protem Sandin? Oh, sorry, you read it. Okay.
You can read the vote.
Okay, then Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Ledesma?
Yes.
Councilmember Orozco?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sandin?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero?
Aye.
And Mayor Cabaldin?
Aye. Then motion carries. And Madam Clerk, I'm reminded by that roll call vote that I believe we didn't take a roll call vote on the consent agenda. Is that correct?
That is correct. Would you like to do that now?
If, if there's no objection, let's return and to take the vote on the motion that was already made by, by the appropriate means. And would you please call the roll?
Yes. Um, councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sandin?
Aye.
And Mayor Cabaldin?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, so that brings us to the council calendar.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Um, nothing really new to report as I reported at the last meeting, the Wasefka meeting. Um, that was previously scheduled for April sixteenth. It has been rescheduled to the twenty-third as a special meeting and that will be over Zoom. And that's, that's it for me.
All right. Any questions on the calendar? Uh, so your manager report?
Just that, uh, next week, we will be having a uh, what I describe as more of a regular slate of uh, agenda items, so that it is a regular scheduled council meeting. So uh, when you get the agenda, um, expect to see um, a normal looking agenda. Thanks. It, we'll still have a COVID nineteen update at, at the end of the meeting as well. Thanks.
I think your questions for the city manager reports? City attorney reports?
Uh, nothing to report tonight.
All right. Thank you. A staff direction for members of the council? We, we have no future agenda items request. Is there a motion to adjourn?
The move.
I'll second.
It's been second, uh, moved by councilmember Orozco and seconded by Mayor Protem. It's been moved by councilmember Orozco and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Sandin. That the meeting is staying adjourned. All those, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Very well. Council, Mayor Pro Tem Sandin?
Aye.
Councilmember Orozco?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerrero?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
And Mayor Cabaldin?
Aye. That motion carries and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you and good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.